Then again, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Olivet City Council meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. It's actually our first city council meeting of the new year. And I'd like to welcome everyone. It is we're at Olivet City Center at eleven forty, Dealman Road, Olivet, Missouri, six three one three two. Roll call, please.
Mayor Wile.
Present.
Chairman Pro Tem Waldman.
Present.
Councilmember Clark is absent. Councilmember Carl.
Here.
Councilmember Knox.
Here.
Next item?
Item two, communications. We have no written communications.
However.
However, we are honoring Sergeant Dane Lincoln this evening, so if the fire department will come forward.
Look at your screen.
Oh, we're upside down. Check that out.
So I practiced something on my phone that came through to me and it worked totally in reverse. And I don't know how that happened.
I'm just gonna say for the record that the cameras were working before Darren messed with the remote, and there were people in the room that will verify that.
So it's gotta be operator here. Here we go.
And we're back.
Ready?
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Ms. Yakley. My name's Steve Carmen, Fire Chief, City of Olivet Fire Department. The Olivet Fire Department believes in recognition of our first responders, their actions and outstanding efforts in service to the community. In keeping with the this belief, I'm sorry, with their actions and outstanding efforts in service to the community. In keeping with this belief, the City of Olivet, Olivet Police Department and Olivet Fire Department want to recognize Sergeant Dane Lincoln for his outstanding efforts. On December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, Sergeant Lincoln was providing visible police presence on the parking lot of Mobile on the Run to deter vehicle-based property crimes. Sergeant Lincoln noticed an individual approaching his vehicle. The individual approaching appeared to be in distress, his eyes wide open, his mouth opening and closing and trying to gasp for air. Sergeant Lincoln exited his vehicle and approached the individual and asked if he was choking. He nodded several times and his hands went up towards his throat for the universal sign of choking. Sergeant Lincoln immediately contacted dispatch for EMS and fire response. He told the individual to turn around and he placed his right fist at the bottom of his sternum and with his left hand gave two or three abdominal thrusts to clear the obstruction. After performing the Heimlich maneuver, the individual then said, do it one more time. Sergeant Lincoln told him that the obstruction was partially cleared and there was no need to administer more abdominal thrust. Sergeant Lincoln instructed the individual to rest and lean upon his cruiser and wait for EMS and fire to show. When EMS and fire arrived on the scene, they took over patient care. The Olivet Fire Department would like to recognize Sergeant Lincoln for his life-saving efforts. Your selfless and decisive actions helped save this individual from potentially life-threatening event. For your heroic actions and dedicated performance of duty, you are hereby recognized with the Life Saving Award. Congratulations. Job well done.
I am just gonna go.
I'm just going to, I'm sorry. Good evening, Council, Madam Mayor. I'm just Olivet Police Chief Beth Andreski. I just want to piggyback off the fire department and I'm not gonna steal any of their glory. But the Olivet Police Department would also like to present Sergeant Lincoln with our Police Department's Award of Excellence as well for the same incident. So again, very great job.
No, go ahead. You got everybody here?
Yeah.
You're gonna miss some good stuff.
Where'd they go?
Oh, Darren, he did it again.
Enjoy your evening.
Ms. Yakley, do you want to tee up the next the next communication?
I'm sure. So the next communication is from Dr. Cynthia Bennett with Jodasa? Jodasa, which is a nonprofit organization that works with survivors and children for domestic violence. And she is coming for the council to request the use of Five Oaks at a reduced fee. So if you would like to come to the microphone?
Good evening, Olivet City Council, Madam Mayor. My name is Dr. Cynthia Bennett. I'm the CEO and founder of Jodasa, which stands for Journey Against Domestic and Sexual Abuse. It is a five oh one C three nonprofit agency in North St. Louis County. Statistics shows that every nine seconds a woman is assaulted or beaten in the United States. Since two thousand and two, we have assisted women and their children of domestic and sexual abuse with resources to help them be safe. According to two thousand and twenty-two statistics from the Missouri Coalition, the two thousand and twenty-three data is not out yet. Six thousand three hundred and twenty-seven women and two thousand one hundred and fifty-nine children in the St. Louis region received support. For the year two thousand and twenty-two to date, Jodasa has provided support services to over four hundred and seventy victims, twelve of them residing in the six three one three two zip code. We've spearheaded workshops in two school districts and a university campus totaling thirteen hundred students. We've done workshops in ten churches for faith-based, twenty community outreach services. We provided toiletries to over six hundred and fifty families and funded a hundred and twenty-five days of emergency and overnight stays at the housing and hotels. Jodasa specialized program enhances prevention and intervention services to survivors and their children of abuse. The purpose of these specialized programs is to give victims the resources, education, and courage to change their lives for the better. I want to bring to your attention tonight is our Community Education Program for Students. Traumatic experiences can have a devastating impact on children, affecting their physical, emotional, cognitive, and social development. This is from the Psychology Day, Psychology Today Magazine, that says, "Youth who are at risk of abuse and have experienced trauma in the form of abuse, neglect, and community violence in the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County are in high need of training, resources, and safety planning services." According to the Children's Service Fund, CSF, from a Behavioral Health and Substance Use Needs Assessment, St. Louis County, this was in March of two thousand and seventeen, North St. Louis and Central County students identified greater concerns regarding threats of violence or being injured by another peer more than any other region. JDOTS, which is Jodasa's Development Outreach to Students, is an educational, preventive, and inventive domestic abuse, bullying, and cyberbullying awareness program that educate pre-teens and teens on abuse and how to report. Our developer and HEM program is our one-week summer coding program for ages ten to eighteen that teaches the basics of creating mobile apps through hands-on training, promoting technical skill development and self-empowerment. These programs promote resilience and economic stability to combat financial abuse. We are also open to a partnership to offer a summer coding program at the community center as well. That is why I am here today. Jodasa, a nonprofit, is doing a fundraiser to fund our mission and we ask the council to consider sponsoring our trivia with an in-kind donation of providing the Five Oaks Community Center multi-purpose room with free of charge or a reduced fee for Saturday evening, April the twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you.
Excuse me.
April the twenty-seventh in the evening, a Saturday. Yes, ma'am.
So I wanted to see if there's any, the reason this has come before us is because when the when the Parks Commission was talking about what to charge for different fees, it was they wrote in the, Jennifer, will you help me out? They wrote that they would.
Sure. So I'm gonna put on on your screen.
Thank you. That we would, when it came to like a nonprofit, that we we could make a decision. But since we've only been open since November and we haven't had this request thus far, the question is, does anyone have an opinion of where to go with this request tonight? Or do we want to discuss it at our next workshop and and get back to her the following day?
Right. So on the screen is the code language that the council put in, and it says, under letter B, fees and charges imposed under this article may be waived upon request and upon a determination by the city council. And so there are two factors. First is the granting of a waiver for the requesting organization or entity or for the affected activity will provide substantive benefit to the Olivet community at large. And second, the granting of the waiver requested will serve as a public purpose. So those are the parameters under which you are considering Dr. Bennett's request. And then, you know, if you have questions for Dr. Bennett about her organization or about the event, you certainly now would be a good time to ask her those. And Director Tucker is here this evening. She's the Parks and Rec Director and runs Five Oaks, as you're aware. So she may also be able to answer some more specific questions as well.
So I'll start to my left. Greg, did you have any questions for Dr. Bennett?
I do.
That Rick, Councilmember Knox.
Dr. Bennett, first thing, I commend you and your organization.
Thank you.
For what you do. I was a police officer for forty years. And I've seen seen it. A lot of people don't recognize it, that it's in our community. And I know it is, and it affects all walks of life, but mainly it affects the children. So all I want to say is I I support you and I appreciate what you're trying to do, what you are doing.
Thank you.
And your staff.
Thank you.
But that's all the, that's all I have.
Okay.
For the doctor.
Councilmember Wald.
Thank you. Dr. Bennett, I I do know the efforts of your organization and what you do. I want to go back. You gave some numbers to us, but I was really trying to listen and that was a lot. So in two thousand and twenty, I think you gave numbers for two thousand and twenty-two or two thousand and twenty-three for the domestic violence numbers that you handled in our region.
Yes.
What year was that? What was that number?
For my organization or from the coalition, the state, the region, for St. Louis region?
You want to give me both and?
Okay, yes.
Just teach me.
Okay, from the coalition, this is from the state coalition. These numbers come out from two thousand and twenty-two. There were six thousand three hundred and twenty-seven women and two thousand one hundred and fifty-nine children in the St. Louis region.
Okay.
That's just the St. Louis region, not the state.
And your numbers were, ma'am?
My numbers were four hundred and seventy victims. Twelve of them here in the zip six three one three two zip code. We've worked, done two workshops in two school districts and on the university city campus. We've also, which totaled thirteen hundred students. We've done workshops in faith-based organizations, churches, ten churches for there, working with the leaders. We've done twenty community outreach events. Normally, we do one every year in October, the Jodasa Race Against Abuse. We provided emergency toiletries to over six hundred and fifty families. We sponsor all of the other agencies around the St. Louis. And we funded a hundred and twenty-five bed nights at the hotel or if we had gotten them some type of housing and paid for it. Yeah.
I appreciate that because in my day job, there are there are my fellow social workers who are calling and looking for those kind of beds for these sudden situations that.
So you feel my pain.
So appreciate the purchasing and paying for those beds. To be really honest, I I need a little time to process this and maybe get a little information from my Parks and Rec's director. I I had my own little back and forth with trustees and things like that nature. And I know that this could be, you know, asking a lot more of other nonprofits to come to our community. And the staff here clearly gave me a lot of information about why we can't do things for free anymore. It's a different community center than my old grade school, elementary Grandview School building. So I want to ask you a question. It really deals with time. We do have a workshop coming up at the beginning of February. Would a decision of a, I'm thinking more of a compromise in the middle, to be honest with you.
That's fine.
Okay. Would giving you something, would allowing the council to talk about this, the workshop on what, fifth or sixth of February? And then get and having the city manager get back with you by the seventh of February in any way impede your ability to prepare for this fundraiser?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
That's enough time.
Okay. Can I ask my fellow peers and Madam Mayor if that's the direction that we could go and if you're okay with that?
I would be okay with that. But but since you're here tonight, I do have a couple of questions about the event. Okay, no. So are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. So one is, what kind of fundraiser is it?
Trivia.
Are you, it's a trivia night, so you're looking at using the multi-purpose room or the whole building?
Just the multi-purpose room.
Okay. And you know, we have to look at it from the business end too. I'm passionate about the cause. Unfortunately, I know too many people that have suffered from domestic violence. I would do a lot of work with Lydia's house over the years, but I just, so I, but I I'm passionate about every cause that walks in the door. So we're gonna have to really create some guidelines for this, and you were our first request. So my other question is to you, why Olivet? Why our community center?
Well, one, I was trying to be central because a lot of our board members, they live South County, some live West County. So we're just trying to bring something central because a lot of our supporters and donors, we just don't want them to have to drive way north because they've done it before. So we were just trying to find something central in central Missouri where everybody can come together.
And can you also share with us where you've held other one, other fundraisers in the past?
We've held at St. Peter's Resource Center or St. Peter's United C.C. Church. They have a resource center. We've done some downtown St. Louis at a hotel. We've done something. Mainly, it's either Central City, West End, North County. All of our outreach is at any North County park. We've done Creed Court Park a few years. We've done the, is it Bell Fountain? St. Louis County Park at Bell Fountain somewhere. Yeah. So we've done that. We've done two, started in Ferguson, trying to bring something positive, even though it's a dark subject, but we still try to bring something positive in Ferguson. So we're just trying to, because we realized it was just a not a burden, but it was just a lot for a lot of us living north and then expecting all our donors to just come across the city on this side. So we were just trying to meet them halfway.
Well, thank you very much. Are there any other questions?
I just have one question. What what times were you?
The trivia?
Yes.
Six to nine, and then maybe nine to ten, you know, straighten up, clean up, or fix it back the way we got it. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Well, you'll you'll hear back from Ms. Yakley probably on February seventh.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, yes.
Um, and and looking at this, you know, we're we're looking at what is provided within our community. Is there anything that you would want to perhaps begin to do on an annual basis?
Yes.
In our community, outside of asking for a a room, for a trivia, I mean, something to our community.
Right. I I listed it in here. I said, we were open to a partnership to provide one week summer coding.
I I do hear that. And that is that computer stuff?
Yeah, building apps on your phone, the apps that's on your phone.
Okay.
Teach the kids how to build apps. And that is to combat financial abuse because that's a stop, that's a part of an abuse too, finances. And when people and their children and feel like they don't have the resources, the education, and knowledge, and so they stay in relationships because they don't feel like it. So we're combating that, teaching our kids how to create mobile app if they want to go into the technical field or if they want to go into entrepreneurship.
Okay, that could be a cost as well. So thank you very much for that clarification.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And have a good evening.
You too.
Next item, please.
Item number three, City Managers' Report. Okay, good evening. Okay. So we're gonna start tonight off with Olive Crossing, as we typically do at the first meeting of the month. This is a photo, a rendering from the recent St. Louis Business Journal article about Olive Crossing. So you can see they've got it rendered out as if it is completely built out. State plan improvements are complete. So the roads are in, the sewer work is in. All of that is finished and closed out. The apartment complex is also complete and they are continuing to lease up. They're approaching thirty percent lease. This was in December. So I think they're only going to be continuing to lease those apartments out. Lot three, lot three is the multi-tenant retail space. So Mr. Yowitz has updated his timeline. Permit approval was December of two thousand and twenty-three. He expects construction to begin in early two thousand and twenty-four and that the shell to be finished by the summer of two thousand and twenty-four, at which point the two known tenants, Smoothie King and Paris Baguette, could begin their interior build-outs for that space. And then lots one and two, this is the Aldi space. Aldi was approved in December at the PCDC meeting. And Carlos has been in contact with their architects as far as getting them ready for their construction plan submittal. And I believe he has a meeting with them and the fire marshal next week to continue to go over any type of questions that they may have about their construction plan so that when those plans are submitted, you know, the review is much easier if you can get the questions finished and and gone through at the beginning before they're before they're done. Yes, sir.
So Greg is out of the construction of these, what's going on these lots?
Greg is not doing the Aldi construction. Aldi is doing their own construction.
Right. So in other words, we're just, they're just, he's leasing the land, but we're gonna have to deal with somebody else, another construction.
For Aldi.
For Aldi.
I believe Greg is building the multi-tenant space. But Aldi, I think, prefers to build their own buildings. And then lot five is the office. And so once again, Mr. Yowitz has updated his timeline here. The tenant contract is ongoing, which then of course means the rest of the milestones are to be determined. He is still predicting that once all of these things have been completed, construction of the shell of the office building would take about a year, ten to eleven months. And as far as any sort of tenants, there is not an update for that. And then for the hotel, again, he has updated these milestones as to be determined, as he is continuing to work through things with Marriott. So any questions about this development? Okay. So news around town with yesterday's ice storm. Republic Services pushed pickups one day forward. So for the rest of this week, any Monday pickups would have been done today. Today's will be done tomorrow and then moving forward through to Saturday. And, you know, just back to the ice storm yesterday, I would like to publicly commend our Public Works Department for all of their work icing, not icing, salting all of the streets in and around Olivet. I think they did a very good job. And then, of course, commending our police and fire who had to respond to calls in the bad weather. I'm happy to report that as far as I know, nobody got hurt. I think there was at least one fall, but no injuries. So that's pretty good. Continuing things happening around the city, the comprehensive plan is coming to an end. It had its official opening of its public hearing at this month's PCDC meeting. Public comments can be submitted online until January twenty-sixth at noon. You see the link there on the slide. Or you're welcome to come to the February first meeting. The Planning Commission held open the public hearing until that February first meeting. So that meeting begins at seven. You are welcome to come on February first and provide any comments you have about the plan. It is expected that the public hearing will close at the February first meeting and that the PCDC will vote on accepting and adopting the comprehensive plan. I expect and will be very surprised if they don't vote in the affirmative. So that's my expectation. And then it would come to the council as an item for you as the council to submit because the document is actually a planning Planning Commission document. And so it would be something that the council would not necessarily adopt, but would certainly affirm and support.
If I could ask a question to you on that. At the PCDC meeting, which you practically summarized my stuff, and that's great. There was some public input and Carlos took down that public input. On the February first, will any of that public input, if so, be drafted into the final document on that night? Or how would that work?
I mean, it's, it was public comment. I think the commission can decide if they if they want to draft that into the document. The commission can can choose not to if they want. Because again, the document is a reflection of the entire community. Because again, the document is a reflection of the entire community, uh, not just one or two individuals. Um, so I mean, it is public comment and you have to listen. Uh, but I, I think it's up to the commission to decide if the plan as a whole as presented is reflective of the comments heard from the community throughout this almost year long um, process.
All right. Thank you for that clarification so much. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Um, Coffee with the Mayor is going to be at Five Oaks in February and it is on uh, Valentine's Day. So we would encourage everybody to come out on Valentine's Day at Five Oaks at eight forty-five in the morning. Our representative from Republic Services, Joelle Aguilar will be there. She's going to talk about recycling. She's going to go into probably a little more detail than she was able to last month when she presented to um, to the commission as she, or as, I'm sorry, to the council. Um, as she was here sort of representing all of Republic Services, um, but she will, um, she'll be available on that day. And then the uh, winter activity guide is online. You can also get a print copy. Um, you can also scan the QR code on the screen and get sent to the activity guide. Um, there, the activity guide was primarily electronic um, this, this season. And the neat thing about the online activity guide is all the links work. So you can uh, register for any of the probably hundred or so activities in the activity guide um, straight on that um, website. Uh, we are also using a new software, kind of a trial version that when you look at it, it's a PDF, but it flips like a book. So it's much more intuitive as you read through it rather than scrolling like a, like a traditional PDF. So uh, we're trying it, we're seeing how it works. Um, it's some software that we think has uh, application across multiple departments. So we may be um, implementing it uh, across multiple departments. It'd be a great thing for the comp plan as people are looking at the comp plan to read like a book. Um, the certified annual financial report, the popular budget. Uh, any sewer lateral or policy books from public works, there, there are a variety of uses um, that it can be used for.
This is, this is a reader for PDFs or this is another kind of format?
No, it's, you upload your PDF and it turns it into a format that it will flip like a book.
But this other program?
Yes, you need to upload it to them.
Oh, you upload it, you get it back?
And you get it back.
And, and it's executable to flip like a book?
Yes.
No, I'm just curious what it does. I might like to use it, you know, I mean, it's.
Yes, I'm certainly, um, if you give me a minute, I can certainly show you.
Right. I mean, we don't have to get off into it. No, I was just curious about the, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it, it even makes noise as you're turning the pages. It's kind of cool.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've seen magazines come out like that. You've probably seen magazines already.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry to um, send us down the rabbit hole.
No, no, that's okay. I, I sent you down.
All right. So um, and then if you want to keep up with all things going on in all of that, we of course encourage you to sign up for the weekend all of that. Um, and then upcoming meetings. Well, first and foremost, and that's not on this list. Um, your social calendar is for Friday. We are playing Bingo at Five Oaks. Um, it is a chamber sponsored event and it starts at, I think, six thirty. Starts at seven. Okay. Doors open at six thirty, starts at seven. Uh, if you have daubers, bring your daubers. Um, otherwise, yeah, just come enjoy. It'll be fun. Um, and then the upcoming council and commission meetings are on the, uh, on the screen. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I am just curious, the photograph on the uh, on, on our parks and rec, where, where is that photograph taken? Okay.
Yeah, I thought, but I didn't want to assume.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any, are there any questions for Ms. Yackley? Next item, please.
Item number four, city council reports. Okay, I'll start to my left. Council member Carl.
Um, I have nothing to report.
Okay, to my right. Council member Knox.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Chairman Proton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a couple of things to report. First off, I did attend the municipal league executive board meeting this past um, Thursday and some interesting conversations with legislation being uh, uh, submitted um, for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five year. Um, some of this is including an effort to remove, excuse me, remove sales tax from grocery stores. And what people don't understand, that also impacts Walgreens. It also impacts gas stations because groceries are sold everywhere. So that is something that um, is, is trying to creep back up this year in our legislature. Uh, so we'll be on the lookout for that. Um, I attended the January eighteenth Planning and Community Design Commission meeting and our uh, city manager, Ms. Yackley pretty much summarized it. Um, the comments are uh, up until January twenty-sixth with PCDC potential adoption February first. There was a public input and a suggestion with regards to uh, the um, uh, uh, the vision uh, uh, statement and our policy. Uh, Carlos did an excellent job, an excellent job summarizing the history back from yes, when Greg Yowitz wanted to do a QT where we now have Price Crossing. I mean, that's how far back the young man went. So it was an excellent presentation. I encourage uh, others to go listen to it and watch it. Um, and understand what we're doing and why we're doing it. And um, uh, again, putting sustainability in the vision was a suggestion. Um, reviewing the plan annually is Shaki's recommendation for uh, performing uh, priority and budgeting purposes. And we'll see pretty much what happens on February one. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I attended the park meeting on January seventeenth. Um, it was a good meeting. It was a thorough meeting, so I have a lot to share. Um, it began with Eric Marks, who's an Eagle Scout. He's a candidate. He made a presentation um, about creating a free, one of those freestanding libraries at by the community center by, by Vogues. Um, and he shared with us his vision and his plans and um, it was very good. Did, then the director's report, which um, this time was made, given by Patrick Mc- McGee, I don't know what happened there. McGee and um, and Beverly was with him, but Beverly reported more about Five Oaks later on. But the director before focused on, um, we've had some real, some amazing successful programs lately. We had Kids Night Out prior to the new year. We had a kid, kids day in with the new year, uh, the first day back. And then we had a winter break camp and that was so well received. It was with, with that oh my gosh, Josh, or no, Circus Caput. And um, he's one in the same, right? And um, it was so well received that at the end of, of that, the parents were saying, well, we want to do this again for spring break. We have another camp that's already set up for a spring break. So we are looking, they'll probably be offering two parallel camps during spring break. Um, the youth basketball has, has grown and the games have been scheduled. We have an increase um, of twenty percent in um, of, of participants. There's four hundred individuals playing. There's uh, we have forty teams. We are using, we have partnered with Ladue Schools for the first time with basketball and we're using their gyms this year. And so that's also very exciting. Um, the playground, um, the indoor children's playground, I don't know if everyone has known this, but the social media is like really carrying, carrying us along and get it, we are getting you know, pinged on it and playgroups are meeting there. And um, I, I hope everyone saw that in STL Magazine. We're listed in an article about seventeen toddler friendly playgrounds in the Saint Louis metro. Um, and families are coming and they're reading there and um, and it's really been a great a, a very, especially with the cold weather. A lot of people are utilizing them and it's just a stepping stone into getting involved there. Um, we've had, uh, and then for the report on Five Oaks, we've had an eighteen percent growth in membership since December. Um, we were, we are up to five hundred and forty-four members, uh, memberships. But the memberships in, include, it's not just a household. They include, and you'll bear with me, um, youth memberships, adult non-resident, youth resident, um, sixty plus non-resident households, corporate memberships, not sixty plus non-residents, non-resident households, resident households, sixty plus resident households, part-time employees household, uh, full-time employee households, renew active, which is through UHC, um, health insurance and resident households. So um, our numbers are growing, but we've got all these different avenues where people can come in and joins, which is really exactly what we had talked about. Since Five Oaks opened, we have had thirty-eight room rentals um, this far and six of, um, in addition to six in the playground and one kitchen and one night in, in the gym or one day in the gym. So um, you know, that reflects back to our conversation tonight about um, wanting to run, to rent the facility. But it's already brought in over um, it, in these first two and a half months, twenty thousand dollars in revenue, which is really exciting because, you know, we we were supposed to be open a year ago, so we're a little behind on the revenue, but we're gonna, we're gonna get there, or at least our goal is um, is to make it halfway. Of what, since we'll be open for half the year. Um, the other discussions that they, that they brought, discussed, we will be bringing up in front of the council later this evening. So I won't steal Beverly Tucker Knight's thunder. Um, and then the beautiful program guide, which has also already been discussed. So um, with no further ado, I'll take some questions if there are any. So kudos to Beverly and her staff.
So I think those two items that you referred to uh, were taken off the agenda at the last minute. So if you wanted to go ahead and prep those, that would be fine.
So um, the other item I thought we were going to discuss tonight is we, there was discussion with the Parks Commission about the pavilions. And we were looking at Stacy Park on the weekends only being an all-day rental. And that the other parks would continue to be a half day or an all, half day or all day. Um, and when Beverly, and we had a very long discussion about it and very in-depth. And, and I think when Beverly, when Ms. Tucker Knight comes before us, she'll explain the reasons why and, and the, and, and the logic behind it. But it does make a lot of sense and um, and I think that people in the long run will be really happy with it. Um, and then the program guide was the other item that that you've already shared and I did my little commercial by waving it in the air. So um, no, I'm really proud of our parks and what we've accomplished. Next item, please.
Item five, monthly financial report, November twenty twenty-three.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, in front of us, we have our uh, five months of our fiscal year up to the end of November. Um, and with what we can see here is um, can I develop, nothing really new to report. Uh, maybe a couple of things we'll need to have our uh, ears perked up for in the next couple of months. But revenue, they do end below expectations at around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and then expenditures also below expend, uh, below our expectations at this point uh, by three hundred and fifty thousand. So that turns into a net favorable uh, variance of uh, about ninety-one thousand dollars. We can see our reserve policy is well in compliance with at fifty percent of that full fiscal year uh, expenditures by about, about four million dollars. The, some of the details behind this, uh, sales taxes, they are uh, slightly ahead for the month, end of the month. Uh, the sales taxes themselves, one percent is right on expectations where we thought. And then uh, the use taxes are ahead of where we thought. So use taxes are, are doing well. Um, property taxes have uh, fallen, fallen just a hair behind again for November. We thought we had, usually we get a a little bit of a bump toward the end of uh, November as the, a lot of the mortgage companies pay the escrows into the property taxes. Didn't show up, but that we'll see them uh, catch back up in December. And then uh, utility taxes are hanging in there really good after a really good year last year. Uh, with some elevated budgeting uh, mixed here and there. Some of the details behind the uh, revenue expectations, um, uh, that Parks and Rec Department itself, if we go to the detail and we can, uh, more than happy to go there. Um, they're uh, slower than we had thought by about four hundred and seventeen thousand this year. So if we were to take that with the overall, we're below expectations at two sixty. You see there's a, a large contributor there. Uh, on the uh, expenditure side of the Parks and Rec Department, that Recreation Department itself is lagging about a hundred and thirty-six, hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, what, overall, what we'd see, this is about exactly what we would have expected. Uh, going back, you know, several years, the first time we planned this out, about a two or three month ramp up time. Followed by then uh, everything kind of catching back up. And that's, that's what we're seeing here into November.
So I'm on the general fund revenue uh, page, uh, budget versus actual. And I just want to ask, under the licenses.
I think you're on page three, right?
Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
Thanks, uh, Ms. Jackley. Under the licenses, it's uh, we're, we're behind by thirteen thousand. Could you, and please forgive me, I just don't go do my homework as
Yeah.
As well as I used to, Darren. What are the licenses and why are we that far behind?
Sure. The licenses detail end up in uh, toward the back and we're going to go end up on page uh, uh, it's page fifteen, but I'll tell you, the, the only thing that we expect there is the automotive licenses uh, shows up inside of that detail up to this in November. You know, our business licenses are toward the end of our fiscal year. And then
My keys. Sorry.
You're fine. So of the sixteen thousand, everything we had assumed there to the end of November is automobile fees, which strangely enough, those are the stickers.
We talked about.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Yeah. Uh, so those are the automobile fees that we would have expected to receive there. The five fifty, if you ever remember stickers, uh, the police department would hound you every March, whatever.
All right. So we're going to eventually get that revenue. Okay.
Animal licenses end up there, service and merchants manufacturing. And that's why it's only projected to be at sixteen thousand and we're behind because the same thing I had said before. Uh, it, it seems we're at the beck and call of the processing of the payments at the county. And so I just, I guess wrong sometimes. They're working hard, I'm sure. Um, and so uh, the, the, the remaining categories were there, which is where you're kind of looking at that right there. There's some, some weakness here and there. Uh, the permits is behind where we thought at this time. Uh, you know, it's we're at the, the beck and, or we're, we're at the will of the, the developers of uh, you know, to, to turn in those things. If we were to look at the detail there, this, the commercial permit uh, is, is why we're behind. The residential is done better than we had expected to this point. So um, overall then on the expenditure side, uh, they're slower than we thought. And that's because of the, the opening at Five Oaks. There's some personnel and kind of a uh, vacancies that have, uh, put in there. We'll look at it this a little bit more uh, next week. I'm preparing because we're going to talk again uh, through the six months uh, next week. Uh, so with that, uh, the only other thing on page two, you can see the, the sales tax chart. Uh, now remember, we had really good, you know, uh, middle of twenty twenty-three was really good. And then now we're seeing it wane off a little bit. And uh, we had the best November we had, followed by uh, the worst December, you know, if we look through these times, this happens. Um, if we were, we'll talk about it a little next week. Uh, it's happening again in, in uh, January. You look at this seven years, you can see two bad months in a row. Uh, so it's something we're watching as we go into budgeting. Um, good news is, again, we have good reserves. We have enough time to, to pay attention. It's uh, at a good time in our budgeting to make adjustments if we were to need to do this going into uh, the next several months for budgeting. So uh, that's all I have for the.
Is some of that with the sales tax due to the changeover of some of the businesses that have left or?
Uh, I won't say too much. No, it doesn't appear to be. We have good, uh, our sales taxes have, have been good. They've, uh, some leave and they've been replaced by, by good ones up, up to this point. And it's so, uh, it's, it's too early to tell on any kind of, anything other than.
Great.
Anything else?
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions?
You know, our use tax has increased and gone well, and the use tax did, basically deals with online sales, so maybe that will pick up as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Next item, please.
Item six, hearing from citizens.
Do I see any hands in the audience? No, we're good. Okay, let's keep going.
Item number seven, Bill three zero one eight, an ordinance to revise the compensation for members of the Olivet City Council pursuant to section two point two of the Olivet City Charter, second reading.
So this is the second reading to change, um, council's annual or monthly compensation from three hundred dollars per month to four hundred dollars per month. You did a first reading last month in December, and so this is coming back to you, uh, for a second reading. Just as a reminder, should you choose to, um, pass this, uh, bill this evening, this would not go into effect until after the April twenty twenty-four election. And then it would cycle through as all the council members are re-elected.
And were new ones elected.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Are there, is there any question or discussion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve Bill thirty eighteen and ordinance to revise the compensation for members of the Olivet City Council pursuant to section two point two of the Olivet City Charter.
Second. Call for the vote, please.
Uh, council, uh, councilmember Knox.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl.
Yes.
Chairman Proton Waldman.
Yes.
Mayor Wile.
Yes.
And the motion is passed.
Thank you. Next item.
Item number eight, Bill three zero one nine, an ordinance amending chapter one forty of the Olivet City Code pertaining to the closure of police view video records, first reading.
So if you, you may recall that at the, um, December twelfth council meeting, um, city attorney Martin, uh, brought forward a topic related to a citizen's request for video, police video to an, uh, an incident, uh, related to a domestic violence call. And, um, the Missouri Sunshine Law allows police video that is recorded in a non-public place, so for example, inside someone's home, to be considered a closed record. Um, and the council took action on that specific, uh, request. And then we asked, uh, Mr. Martin to draft, uh, language consistent with the Missouri Sunshine Law, uh, to allow the closure of these police video records. And so this legislation, it does that for you, and so this is a first reading for that.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number nine, Bill three zero two zero, an ordinance changing the name of Enterprise Fleet Way to Alice Place and authorizing the city manager of the city of Olivet to confirm with the appropriate authorities regarding this change, first reading.
Will you tee that up also?
Absolutely. So at your, um, January work session, excuse me, the council discussed renaming the street section that, uh, is between Dealman the north-south portion of Dealman Industrial that comes off Olive and, uh, Price Road. And so it is this little section right here that is currently named Enterprise Fleet Way because this is where Enterprise um, used to be. And so Enterprise is no longer there. They have relocated their operations, uh, outside of the city. And so a request has come in that the council consider renaming this section of the street. Um, and the council has, uh, at their work session, decided that they wanted to rename it Alice Place because here's Price, Price Road, and there is an Alice right over here. And so you would just extend this street name until this stop sign right here. And then it would continue to be Dealman Industrial, just like it is here, and you would come off Olive of Dealman Industrial, turn left, and you're on Dealman Industrial. So this is the first reading of that, uh, legislation.
Are there any questions? Thank you. Next item.
Item number ten, resolution twenty twenty-four two forty-six, a resolution authorizing and directing the execution of a contract with Oracle America Incorporated and GovSense LLC for the provision of software and services related to the city's finance and planning and community development departments.
Good evening, uh, mayor and council members, and if, uh, anything will make you go crazy, it's wondering if you've seen the same thing twice by accident. Uh, on my level, I'm glad everyone's left because this is really embarrassing. Uh, we go through budgeting, uh, practices and you think you asked the right questions of people, and then you go to sign the contract and they find out they made a mistake in the cost. And so this is, uh, um, the, uh, a, a representation of the same thing we saw in the December meeting, which is to renew our, uh, finance and permitting software, GovSense is what we call it. Uh, and so there's a, the only change there you can, uh, see is on the very final page. And what we see is an escalation of the, uh, support costs with GovSense by, uh, ten percent per year. So we had the base, everything looks exactly the same except for, uh, the year two, three, four, and five costs, and then that total cost over the, those years. Uh, I'm more than happy to, uh, ask any questions and, and I'll eat my crow of, uh, all the hard times I've given people for not asking the right questions, uh, during budgeting.
Yeah, you don't have to eat crow off if, if, if it's Oracle that came back and said, hey, we didn't include that. It's, it's, it's them, and we're being mindful of recognizing that. Um, so Darren, is that total for the ten percent each year for the five years? Is that total difference add up to the thirty-eight thousand dollar difference? Or what is the monetary difference?
Yeah, so the, before, I think we had it, it was twenty thousand per year times five is a hundred, hundred thousand. I'm not sure what you're getting with it, you're thirty-five thousand, but it was twenty thousand, seven sixty-four times, uh, five times, which is a hundred thousand, a hundred and two thousand. And now we're a hundred and twenty-six total.
Okay. Okay.
Just on this portion of the contract and then the resolution. So, uh, we came back tonight so we can officially sign the contract.
Okay, so I'm just a little confused on funding requests, finance line thirty-eight thousand, planning line thirty-eight thousand, what is that? What are you telling me there on the funding request?
Yep.
To me, I'm reading it differently than what you're saying.
Sure. The, uh, so that line that you're seeing is a little bit of a relic. Um, but this is how the, the cost would be spread between all the things in this resolution, which would include the Oracle America part of the contract for year one and the, uh, uh, year one of the GovSense contract, which didn't change. Nothing changed in year one. It's two, three, four, and five, that the city manager would not have had authorization to sign at those amounts when they were escalated, so. That's the difference.
So do we have an action tonight or is this the?
We do. We, uh, it's the same one, yeah, that, that we had before, except, yeah, with a different resolution number.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash two forty-six, a resolution authorizing and directing the execution of a contract with Oracle America Incorporated and GovSense LLC for the provision of software and services related to the city's finance and planning and the community development department's recommendation of a five-year contract for GovSense and Oracle NetSuite Software for community development and finance department use.
Second.
Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Knox.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl.
Yes.
Chairman Proton Waldman.
Yes.
Mayor Wile.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
And I don't think you have to eat crow, because it really wasn't your error.
Exactly.
Uh, yeah. That's what everybody else says too, and I want to give them a hard time.
Thank you.
Not having the correct amount.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Uh, item eleven, request for document destruction, finance department.
Welcome back, Mr. Mann.
Thank you. Uh, we can see here from our listing, uh, the last time we cleaned was in two thousand seventeen when we moved here. And so, uh, there's, uh, just some things that we'd like to, of, in general, we keep about seven years of accounts payable documents here and three years of, uh, any kind of revenue records. Uh, the, these classifications under the general GS is, uh, you can keep, you could throw things away about a, a year after they're done, and so, uh, we keep things a little bit longer. But now we're full of, our, our spaces are full, filled up. And then the other, only other thing on there is annual registration cards. We've kept up, kept them a long time, so we have to keep them for, uh, I just six, six years, five years, they're five years, that's why they're eighteen, nine, so sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen are, are going to be gone. Which is unfortunately, they figure, I guess, the life of a dog.
We're good. Any questions?
I'm just curious.
Uh huh.
It's not really a question. These are paper documents. These are not electronics that we're destroying, or they are a mix of both. Because these are years when we had electronics. You were here, previous city manager, and we were doing a lot electronically.
Yeah, um, we don't destroy electronic documents just because they're part of the system, but they, but there is paper that's generated. Yeah, from this stuff between a deposit slip or, uh, a printout that was signed, bank statements and reconciliations. We actually print those out and sign them, just for the, for those records.
Okay.
Um, yeah, no, we don't, uh, without, we can do, uh, some corking one-on-one, but you know, what's a record? And usually electronics don't.
Okay.
Count as.
It's paper.
But yeah.
Paper will shred.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, you won't probably come back here and ask you to delete stuff off the server. I don't, maybe, maybe we'll get there someday, but right now you won't ask. Yes. That, these are all paper, pieces of paper that I'll have to call the shredder for.
I'll be happy to entertain a motion.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I, uh, that's why I was there. Uh, Madam Mayor, I, uh, make a recommendation that we approve the document destruction memo dated January seventeen, twenty twenty-four and allow the destruction of documents as classified and described in the memo of one seventeen twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Knox.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl. Chairman Proton Waldman.
Yes.
Mayor Wile.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Next item, please.
Item twelve, hearing from citizens, part two.
Um, it doesn't, it doesn't appear that anyone online or in the room would like to speak, so I hope not showing pictures of the room, so. We have no, no, no one here to, for hearing from citizens at this time, so we will move on to, um, item thirteen.
Item thirteen, review and acceptance of minutes.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I, uh, read the minutes from the council meeting of December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, and the work session minutes of January ninth, twenty twenty-four, and I motion to approve them as written.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Uh, councilmember Knox.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl.
Yes.
Chairman Proton Waldman.
Yes.
Mayor Wile.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Next item.
Item fourteen, city attorney's report.
Madam Mayor, no real report, but would request a closed session for attorney-client communications and contract discussions under sixteen oh twenty-one, one, and twelve.
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Uh, councilmember Knox.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl.
Yes.
Chairman Proton Waldman.
Yes.
Mayor Wile.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you. Um, so at this time, we will, um, we just, we just returned from closed session, um, discussion was held, but no decisions were made. And I would be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote? No vote? Good night, everybody.